Welcome to the Tuesday, August 15, 2023 Business Meeting of the Wall Township Public School District. Please join me in the flag salute. Bless you. Thank you. At this time, may we have the Board Secretary, Mr. Smyke, please read the Sunshine Announcement and perform roll call for us?
This is the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for which adequate notice under the Urban Public Meeting Act was provided by notice to the CoStar, Esberry Park Press, all Wall Township Public Schools, Township Clerk's Office, and the Board Office on January 5, 2023. Take a roll call. Mr. Adenizio?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. DiGiuliani?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Here.
Mr. Mallo?
Here.
Mr. Nasser? Mr. Sam Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Ms. Stutz?
Here. Thank you. At this time, may I please have a motion for the Board to go into executive session for the items listed on the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sam Filippo, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodnett, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Board will be adjourning to executive session and we anticipate returning at 7:30.
I'd like to welcome you back to the Tuesday, August 15th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Wall Township School District. If you'd please join me in saluting the flag in the back.
Mr. Smythe, will you please perform roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Anizio.
Here.
Mr. Buffa.
Here.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Here.
Ms. Heinmet.
Here.
Mr. Malev.
Here.
Mr. Nassar.
Mr. Samplippo.
Here.
Mr. Wondrack.
Here.
Ms. Stites.
Here. At this time, I'm going to be turning the pod or the microphone over to Dr. Handrichan for a really exciting award that's going to be presented this evening.
Well, this is a great opportunity for us because for those of you that attend our board meetings regularly and for those of you that watch at home, you would know that one of our Student Board of Education representatives is Mr. Christopher Daley. And we have, we're so incredibly proud of our board reps, but I will tell you there's a particular point of pride that took place this summer that this we would be horribly remiss if we did not acknowledge it publicly because our Mr. Chris Daley, who is a rising senior at Wall High School, has really earned two most prestigious awards that we have a bit of a video that we want to show. And because we know Mr. Daley so well, after the video, we're going to invite him up because I'm pretty sure there's never been a microphone that he hasn't loved. Is that true, Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Okay, I'm pretty sure because if there's anybody that I could put on the spot to talk about your experiences this summer, that would be you. Okay, so without any further ado, board members, if you're Okay, so without any further ado, board members, if you're, if you are not able to see the screen, please, if you would go to the wings because it is definitely worth viewing. So without any further ado, here is a wonderful video that I am ridiculously proud to present tonight.
What do you see here? A roller rink. That's what you're all probably think, but not me. Although I do see a roller rink, I also see a massive land that has produced some of the most fun, rewarding, and amazing moments in my lifespan that consist of 17 years. You see, in 17 years, I've done a lot of things. I started a sports media company, interviewed Shaquille O'Neal, went to Ireland once, but none of these things are the things I consider most important. The most important thing I've done is raised $16,000 for St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, assisting St. Jude in the fight against childhood cancer. Throughout my journey, a three-year journey that I started as an itty-bitty freshman in high school, I learned more about myself than I could ever imagine. I saw St. Jude commercials for years on TV, and one day, I decided to finally do something. Most people just say they want to do something. I was inspired by Danny Thomas and the commercials at St. Jude to actually put words into action and do something for the kids fighting off this battle of their lives. I started emailing local companies and businesses to see if they would donate to this crazy idea I had, to start a soccer league on a roller rink and have all the profits go to St. Jude. The sport would be known as Futsal, and the league is known as the TSC Futsal League, TSC being short for the sports media company I started called The Sports Corp. I came into the fundraising world not knowing what to expect. I had well-written emails and sent them out to everybody and anybody. And while on Google meets for class during my COVID-struck freshman year, instead of learning how to take this great root of X, I was working hard on my fundraising efforts. However, I learned that it was not so easy. I didn't see many no's. I actually didn't see a lot of anything. I saw a whole lot of nothings. People not answering, not responding, it was annoying, it was frustrating, but I knew I had to keep on going. I had to have grit, which is defined by Merriam-Webster as firmness of mind or spirit, unyielding courage. It just so happens to be one of Danny Thomas's seven leadership traits that I've learned about three years as a member of SJLS. I kept strong, I going, and my fundraiser was a success. Ended up raising over $1,000, and the event was so popular amongst the four teams and 16 kids that participated, I did it again a few months later, and then again, and again. And currently, I am working on the fifth season of the TSC Futsal League with nine teams and 36 total players, 40 total kids if you include the coaches, ranging from freshmen in high school to freshmen in college. In total, across all the seasons, the Futsal League has raised over $13,500 for St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. I've had sponsors that range from chocolate milk companies to local restaurants to professional soccer teams in Norway. Yes, in Norway. And don't ask me how, it all just sort of happened. Many times, kids my age and adults in the community ask how I get in touch with these sponsors and get them to donate to the cause. To be quite honest, it's a mindset to keep going even when you see it stagnate, because eventually, if you keep asking, if you keep having the right intentions, and if you keep pouring your heart out for the right reasons, you can and you will find a way. I learned that you have to be tenacious, you have to be persistent, and above all, you have to be gritty. The Futsal Rink is where the magic happens. It's where all my efforts go for one day of soccer. I haven't won the Futsal League, and my friends that participate crack jokes, which I totally understand. After all, how does the person who runs the league not win it? But for me, I won when I see them. $16,000 and what it does. It affords 1.5 CAT scans, 35 days of oxygen, or three days ICU room. St. Jude is totally free for families, thanks to fundraisers like ours, my fellow SJLS members, and it warms my heart and means just everything to me that I've been able to do this for three years now and be a small part of such a great cause. And through it all, as mentioned, I've learned one thing about myself. If you want to get somewhere in life that you really want to be, you have to be gritty. I'm Chris Daley. I really appreciate you for watching my speech. Thank you, everybody.
I've probably seen the video about 10 times so far, so it was beautifully done. Chris, I would very much like to hand you the microphone right now. If you can kind of share your experiences, we would love to hear.
Thank you. Um, here? Well, I sprained it. Yeah, anyways, thank you, everybody, for the applause, and I really appreciate it. So I got involved with St. Jude in my freshman year, right when COVID started. It was in December. As mentioned, I did a fundraiser, and then from there, someone from St. Jude reached out to me. They have this youth ambassador program that almost every state now has, and if you raise $2,500, that's the benchmark, you get invited to Memphis, Tennessee. So after raising over $10,000 this past year, special thanks to Harpoon Willies. Go to Harpoon Willies because they donated a lot of that money, but a lot of, thank you. Thank you. But yeah, a lot of other companies as well. And this past year in the TSC Futsal League, it was actually the second-to-last day of school. I didn't have finals, so everybody else did. I said, you guys can study. I don't really care about you guys, as long as I'm done with my finals. And then we did the Futsal League, and over 70 people went. A lot of people went as fans and a lot of players as well, and it keeps expanding, and people keep asking me to keep on doing this, and they want me to get these basketball leagues. But most importantly, I went to Memphis, Tennessee, and for that video, everybody that got invited was asked to make a video, and the winners got awards. So I got the New Jersey Award for the best video, and then the national award where they presented that in front of St. Jude, and I actually had to say a speech about everything I'd done with St. Jude, why to stay involved, and it was just an awesome experience to be out in Memphis for the second year in a row. And again, I really appreciate it, Dr. Handerhand, and I guess I'll see you guys all within the next year, as I'll be the board rep.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Christine Stites, board president, to present you just a little token, just a little something, something.
So today, Christopher Daley, you're hereby recognized by the Board of Education on the 15th day of August for your outstanding achievement in earning the St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, New Jersey, a national awareness award. We are so proud of you.
Thank you.
Paparazzi, thank you.
All right, we got it all.
Yeah. Chris, thank you for that you did for the first St. Jude, and really for us and for everyone. It was such an amazing night. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, everyone. So again, congratulations to Chris and his family. Chris is a Bulldog alumni from Old Mill School. I know we're all very proud of him as well. And this is one example of one of our students who's really knocking themselves out. We've got a tremendous treasure trove of kids who are extending themselves, we're so proud of them. So when you hear about things like this, certainly, please let us know, and thanks for sharing. So it's a great way to highlight Chris and these accomplishments for August. At this time, I'm going to be opening the floor for public comment on school-related issues. These are not for the action, the action items. This is for any, anything that you'd like to discuss. Please feel free to come to the podium whenever you're ready and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Margaret Mullen. First, I want to start off congratulating Chris. That's, you know, we get so many charities, but that's the one that I never skip. That's the one I always give to. I'm calling, I'm, I'm, I came to this board meeting because I am so upset about, not much upsets me, but I'm so upset about us having school on Good Friday. I know that in the calendar, there's three snow days, and then the one snow day, if it doesn't snow, you have off the Friday before Memorial Day. I'm asking the board if there's any other day, or if there's possibly you can do two snow days and give us Good Friday off. I, I am Christian, I'm very religious, but in all my years of school, and my children and my grandchildren's, we've never gone to school on Good Friday. I know it's a half a day, but I just feel so strongly about having that day off. I also think that, like I said, there's so many other days that you could possibly give us off and not, and not that day. I don't know if it was an error, maybe you guys didn't realize it was Good Friday, or, you know, the school calendar, who thinks about Easter when you're doing the school calendar like the February before? But I would really appreciate it if you would give this serious consideration and possibly have Good Friday off and give up one of the other possible days. If there's any, if, if you need help with anything, the calendar, I can, you know, show you where I think would be good, but I'm sure you guys don't need me to tell you what's good and what's not good. But would the board consider that? Or would the board consider something like that, maybe doing two snow days instead of three snow days and giving us Good Friday off? Nobody wants to commit. I was on the board, I was on this board for six years way back, 30 years ago, and I know you guys don't like to commit, but could it be something that you discuss at your next executive meeting? You can't say.
Typically, ma'am, what the board is trying to do right now is not have an exchange right now during public comment, but we'll certainly take this into consideration.
Would you please take it into consideration? I truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall. I'd love to talk to you after. Yeah, a couple things here. I see Chris and Scott is moving from the high school, from assistant principal, to WIS. I think a lot of people had no idea that was happening. It's on tonight's agenda, starting tomorrow. And Sethia, it is moving from intermediate to the high school. So if you could let everybody know why that's happening, that would be great. Lots of rumors circulating, so it'd be nice to hear what the reason is. I also see you're paying for a child to go to the Performing Arts Academy in the 10th grade for a cost of $17,356 with a start date of 9/5, and I'm wondering what happened with that, because those, those payments are usually hidden, and I know firsthand how that goes. So if your child, you know, would like an opportunity somewhere else because Wall can't fulfill their performing arts schedule, if you don't like the child, or don't like the parent, maybe you don't like the child, then, then you don't pay for it. And there's a guy here in the audience who did not like that one, refused to have my child paid for, so hopefully he's going to get up so we can hear what he wants to say.
Please direct your comments to the chair, Ms. Cross. Thank you.
I'm also going to go over my lawsuit. You changed attorneys. His, your brief was due August 4th, and my reply brief is due September 1st, and then we go to court September 29th. So I, I can't even believe this brief. I don't even know if the board saw it. I'm guessing that you didn't, because normally, I don't know if Mr. Smythe would pass that along, but it did go to Athena Cornell, so we're double paying. But the reasons for them not providing it are just absurd, and the court cases they provide as backup is even more ridiculous because they've got nothing to do with my case. If I was in a school district and I was a money launderer, boy, I'd be in Wall, because basically what you're saying is you can't find what was on your server on December 1st. If I was the gilco murderer, let me tell you, I would ask to have Brian Smythe host the server because he can't find, he doesn't know what was on the server on December 1st, 2022. I can search how to find a Google folder, how to find who last touched it, how to find who deleted it. A, a fifth grader can do that, but Mr. Smythe is not providing the information, and Adam Nasser is again not here tonight. He is personally named, and so is Tracy Handerhand. You know exactly what was in that folder, and you need to turn it over and stop ringing up these ridiculous bills from attorneys, because now we're paying two in addition to Athena Cornell. So I'd like for you to go over that, and I'm hoping on the trailer lawsuit, Mr. Smythe isn't giving false information to have insurance payout, because that would be insurance fraud.
Thank you.
So if you can go over all that tonight, and if Mr. Smythe has been deposed yet, if you can let us know.
Do we have anyone else for public comment at this time?
Kathleen Duran, Wall Township. Again, all comments I make here are in my capacity as a private citizen, and all comments are addressed to Ms. Stites as president of the board. I also took the time to read the briefing on the situation with Mr. Smythe not responding to Betsy Cross's Oprah. The argument that the law firm made, and I'm sure it costs a very pretty penny to have the argument made, is that any document exchanged between the two, two people as representatives of the board and of the school district is not discoverable, even though normally it is, because it was placed into a Google file. The idea that documents that are otherwise discoverable as an ordinary part of American life, i.e. transparency, so ordinarily, in case people don't know it, an email between Mr. Nasser and Tracy Handerhand is subject to Oprah, subject to being read by everybody, barring any confidential information that is otherwise able to be excluded. But by sending the email designated as a Google file, Mr. Smythe takes the position in his affidavit, and the firm argues it further in approximately 40 pages of ridiculous argument, that because it's labeled a Google file, it should not be discoverable. What that means is that any going back and forth, whether it's bid solicitation, whether it's money laundering, whether it's something that's genuinely confidential, or whether it's something just rather mundane about changing the meeting date, which would otherwise be discoverable very easily within Oprah, is now undiscoverable. And the claim is that there is nobody competent enough in the school district to determine what was in the Google folder, and we all know that's a bunch of horse hockey. And I took the liberty of downloading Mr. Hyam's resume and also Mr. Nasser's, and they're both extremely well-qualified. In fact, Mr. Hyam has extensive qualifications, including FEMA logistics, incident command systems, incident response, multiple, multiple agency coordinations. He's certified as a school business administrator, same position occupied by Mr. Smythe, yet he can't locate a Google file until, identify any documents imported as of a certain date. Absolutely ludicrous, because we all know, and trial attorneys use this information all the time, you can tell when files are imported, exported, touched, edited by anybody. So it's not hard to see what was in a folder as of a given date. It's not impossible. It may require some work. I, I don't know what the qualifications are exactly of your IT guy, but Mr. Hyam, as I said, seems to be extensively qualified. Adam Nasser has qualifications that seem to maybe even meet or exceed those of Mr. Hyam in terms of being completely computer literate, and yet, we can't find the documents that are discoverable by the public in the name of transparency. And we're paying for that brief, that 44-page brief. We just, as taxpayer, had to pay for it, and it's absolutely garbage. Thanks, Ms. Stites. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment at this time?
Do we have anyone else for public comment at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to close the floor for public comment. We do not have a student representative report this month, however. Looking forward to September. No pressure. Okay, absolutely. This is Mr. McCann. Okay, and at this point in time, we're going to have a special presentation from our assistant superintendent, Ms. McCann.
Do you want me to hit one of the lights? Is that better for everybody? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Every year, we are required, after receiving our New Jersey state testing data, to present it to the Board of Education and to the community. We have two sets of data to present this evening, the first being the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, also known as the NJGPA, and also our Access for Ls results that were administered this past spring. We're going to start with the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. This is the second year this assessment has been administered in the state of New Jersey. The first year, if you remember me presenting last time around, last year around this time, although we administered it, it did not count for a graduation requirement for those seniors who just left. However, this year, we did administer it to our grade 11 students, and it will be part of their graduation testing requirement for their senior year. The NJGPA is designed to measure the extent to which our students are graduation-ready in ELA and in mathematics, and the graduation readiness is reported separately for each content component. At this point, every parent of an 11th-grade student in Wall Township should have received the student report for both math and ELA, as long as they tested in both of those areas. The ELA component is aligned to the grade 10 standards, so from their previous year, and the mathematics component is aligned to Algebra I and to Geometry standards. So we are required to let you know how we did as a district, but also within our subgroups. So this year, we had 97.2% of our 11th graders who were successful in the NJGPA/ELA component of the testing and are considered graduation-ready, leaving about 2.8% of our incoming senior population, who will need some additional support, but will have another opportunity to take the assessment in October. And then there are other pathways in order for them to meet their testing graduation requirement for their senior year. Within mathematics, we had 72.4% of our population deemed graduation-ready and were successful on the assessment, leaving about 26, I'm sorry, 27.6% who will have that same opportunity to receive some support come September and have an opportunity to take the assessment again come October. Some notable achievements that I'd like to point out is that we've increased our percentage in passing from last year to this year. At this time last year, in 2022, we only had 52% of the population passing the assessment, and like I just mentioned, this year, we had 97.2%. So kudos to the ELA department in really looking in our data and diving in and implementing some instructional strategies and also curricular components in order to make our students successful. Within mathematics, last year, we had 68% that were graduation-ready, and this year, like I mentioned, 72.4% that are graduation-ready. So again, I think the interventions and the processes that we put in place for this current school year have deemed and proved to be successful, whether that be curricular realignments or support programs that we provided to the students. For our current students, as I mentioned, similar to what we did this past year, we will review the standards that were assessed on the assessment. The NJDOE does release what's called evidence statements to each of the school districts, and it outlines the standards, the New Jersey standards that were assessed, and the percentage of students who did well on those particular standards. So in review, in the ELA section, we'll be working on our literary analysis tasks this coming school year, reading informational texts and reading science and technol, I can't speak, science and technical subjects within our standards and our curriculum moving forward this year. In mathematics, we'll start to take an extra dive in where these three components lie within our math curriculum, which would be interpreting expressions that represent a quantity in terms of its context, modeling and reasoning within our algebra and geometry curricula, and also in geometry, identifying and describing relationships among inscribed angles, radii, and chords. So we have some work ahead of us, but at least we know what areas we need to work on. In terms of Nights for Success, as I mentioned, our students will have the opportunity, who did not pass the NJGPA, will provide them a Nights for Success after-school program, where they'll be able to come in for either math or ELA or both subjects, and then have that opportunity to retest in the beginning of October, so that they can know where they lie in terms of their pathway for meeting that graduation testing requirement. Access for Ls, now we're going to shift a little bit, and the Access for Ls assessment is administered to all of our students who receive ESL services or qualified for ESL services but denied them. And they take that assessment in a window of time throughout the course of the school year between February and April. It is for all students in grades K through 12, and it consists of four separate assessments. There's a listening component, a speaking component, a reading component, and a writing component. These assessments are measuring the student's oral language, their literacy skills, and their comprehension skills. They're aligned to what we call the WEADA standards, which is our guideline in teaching any type of ESL program, which are broken down into those four assessment categories listed earlier. And there are six proficiency levels that the students can test into. Now, the oral language component of the test is taken, is equal to 50% of their listening score and 50% of their speaking score. Their literacy component is 50% of reading and writing, which would make sense, and comprehension is 70% of their reading score and 30% of their listening score. They also receive an overall score, which is comprised of 35% of reading, 35% of writing, 15% of their listening component, and 15% of their speaking component, which all equates out to where they fall within their proficiency level. The lowest level would be in entering, which is where a student would show that they have minimal social language and minimal academic language, and really rely on visual and graphic support. Whereas the next level is emerging, which is where students show that they have some English, social English, and some general academic language, but still rely very heavily on some visual and graphic support. There's a developing category right in the middle, where we start to see that the students can use social English and some of the academic language, but still having some support with visual and graphic supports. And then we have expanding, and this is where they start to really show that they know and can use the English language and some of our more academic language. And it progresses to being a bridging aspect, where they can know and use the social and academic language within their grade-level material. And then we have where the highest level, which is the reaching level, where it shows that they can use the social and academic language at the highest level measured by the assessments in those four categories. So you're all asking yourselves, well, Jen, how did we do? So we have what I like to call a beautiful, almost bell curve, which is what you would want to see. We have students in each of our buckets, with the majority of them where they are either developing or expanding their skills. Keep in mind, this year, we did have a number of students who were coming into Wall Township with very little English, almost what we would call a port-of-entry student, where they're coming straight from their home country, have never been part of the English language, and they have to take this assessment. So the fact that we only had 6.9% at entering, but yet we have 47.2% at developing and 31.9% at expanding, really shows the dedication that our ESL teachers have with our students and the strength of our program. I'd like to also add that in that four area that's expanding, you'll notice the next section is a score of a five at bridging. In order for a student to exit an ESL program, they need to score a 4.5 or better. So within the four area and the five area, we had eight students within our ESL program who were successful in getting that 4.5 or higher and will be exiting our program. We don't just send them into general education with no support. They will be monitored for two years to ensure that they continue to be successful within our school system. Just to give you some light into how we compared to last year, it's pretty much the same type of statistics and data in terms of our outcomes. We had about 37% that were successful last year, and like we mentioned, the 42% at the highest level of developing this year. So we're moving in the right direction. We do now, for the upcoming school year, have a K through 12 supervisor who will be overseeing our ESL program, as well as our world language program, Dr. Tracy Skinner, who will be assisting the teachers and myself in ensuring that we continue to be successful in these areas. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're going to move into President's Report. The board is excited to note and report out on the referendum projects that are occurring around the district. We hope our stakeholders will enjoy seeing the fruits of the decision made by our community to invest in our facilities, and remind the public to follow our progress on the referendum tab on the district website. There are also a number of capital projects underway that are being funded through local school funds. I hope our community will be thrilled with the results of all the hard work that's being done, and there's more to come on these projects during the board report. We hope that our families, our students, and our staff continue to enjoy a beautiful summer, but we are excited to see activity kicking off as student organizations and booster organizations prepare for an exciting year ahead. We'd like to thank everyone who supports our students year-round. Your efforts create fabulous opportunities for our students, and we are very grateful. The Board of Education will be looking to fill three seats on the board, starting, those seats would start in January of 2024. Please refer to the district website for information on qualifications for serving. Participating as a board member does require considerable time commitment, however, recognizing the chance to contribute to the success of our district is very satisfying. Our newest member on the board, Kathleen D. Giovanni, will be sharing her perspectives when we reach the board report. And that is it for my report right now, and I'm going to be turning it over, Dr. Handerhand, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Stites. Good evening, everyone. I would once again like to thank Chris Daley for all that he has done and continues to do for the St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. I would also like to thank Ms. McCann for updating us on the most recent educational testing information. As I noted last month, district staff have been very busy preparing for the upcoming school year. I would like to express my gratitude to all of the district secretaries, custodians, maintenance staff, and food service personnel for all of their hard work. In the positions that I mentioned, it is go time, the month of August, and they work tirelessly and tirelessly to prepare our schools for the students' and 10-month employees' return. So I am incredibly grateful for all of their hard work, and we are incredibly fortunate to have so many wonderful people working with us. I love the last two weeks of August, because this is when our teachers start returning to the classrooms to create beautiful bulletin boards and all of the other preparations to make our schools vibrant learning spaces. Incredibly grateful, and as Ms. Stites mentioned, our parent teacher organizations, our booster groups have just done wonderful things in preparation for the school year, and I thank them, and they're so incredibly supportive of our staff across the district, that, you know, their hard work does not go unnoticed, and we're incredibly grateful. This week, the district will be hosting the annual new staff orientation. I can't believe we're here at this part of the calendar, so I'm incredibly excited to welcome them aboard. It is just really a very special, special time, and I would like to also thank the WTEA Executive Board for helping out in welcoming the, our new staff members, so thank you. Another thing that's right around the corner is kindergarten orientation, and we are so excited to officially welcome the class of 2036. Yeah, I think I did that right. It took a while. 2036. Well, it is, I have to tell you, you know, for those of you that have attended a kindergarten orientation in one aspect of your life, it is just the coolest day, and we are so looking forward to it. The elementary principals, kindergarten teachers, or nurses are involved this year. It's just such a lot, it's such a wonderful day for families that, you know, if we could just bottle the enthusiasm on that day, I think the world would be a better place. I would like to, Ms. Stites, if you'll allow me, to mention that Good Friday is, attending school half-day on Good Friday, this has been brought up to public comment once or twice in the previous months, and I would like to say that it is certainly under advisement. Certainly, it will be under advisement as we move forward with planning our calendar for the 2024-2025 year. Wow. So I appreciate the comments that were brought here this evening, and further discussion is, will certainly ensue. And the, something, I learned something earlier today, and I learned that August 15th is National Relaxation Day. Okay. Never knew there was such a thing called National Relaxation Day. I would have liked to have gotten the memo a little earlier. All right, I would have passed it along. Didn't happen, but I do hope that on the heels of National Relaxation Day, I hope that you had a wonderfully relaxing day, and that the remaining weeks of summer will prove relaxing for you and for your families. So remember, August 15th, National Relaxation Day. Who knew? So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone back to Ms. Stites.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to be moving into the board report. We're going to be asking Mr. Smythe to give us a brief rundown on some of the referendum projects, as well as the other capital projects that are happening. I feel like you cannot drive anywhere in the district without seeing a lot of improvements going on, so if you would just give us a little update, that'd be great.
Sure thing. So there are five projects that are ongoing in the district. One is on the agenda for approval tonight. The three- The three projects that are included in the 2324 Annual School Budget are the Wall High School Team Room Interior Window Upgrades. They were approved at last month's Board, Board of Education meeting. That work is ongoing. We anticipate the openings of the new window openings to be completed by the end of the week. Work will, will allow for the use of the team rooms when school starts in September. However, due to long lead times, we will be expecting delivery of some of the equipment and installation materials, such as the lockers and countertops, to be completed outside of school hours once, after school gets started. We also have, as you can see outside this building, the asphalt paving. The county started the project last week. They have completely milled the site. That is removing the top inch and a half of asphalt off the existing parking lot. And they started paving on the west side of the staff lot. And that work is, will continue into next week and will be 100% complete by the start of school. The third project, which is being funded from the capital budget, is the replacement of concrete at the front entrance at Wall High School. That approval, it's being awarded as a, through a cooperative purchase, and that's on this evening's agenda. And that work is scheduled to be completed by the start of school in September as well. For the referendum, we have two projects that are ongoing. One is the site work at Allenwood Elementary School, and there is a whole lot of activity going on at that location. That contract was awarded only last month. However, you know, the first job meeting was the second day after it was awarded. The contractor has been extremely busy. There is new concrete that, concrete sidewalk, concrete curbing, concrete steps that, that have been installed. The area is being prepped to be repaved, and that repaving will start next week. And it is anticipated that a majority of the work will be completed by and allow for the easy opening of school in September. However, there is some work that'll be completed after school starts, but it will not have a direct impact on the operation of the school. It is concrete work on the original opening, or front of the school that faces the road that is not utilized as a main entrance. But that work will continue through September. But again, it won't interfere with the operation of the school, and work will be performed outside of school hours. With regard to the high school, we are doing the shingle roof replacement. That project was awarded in June. I would say he's about 40% through the project. And again, as long as we have fair weather between now and the end of the month, that work will be completed by the start of school as well. With regard to the finances, an updated summary was placed on the website today, based on the action that's being taken at tonight's board meeting. And the bills list for claims or, or bills that are related to the referendum are on the agenda. They are listed separately on the Bills and Claims Report.
Ms. Stites, I would like to add just one thing.
Thanks, do.
Okay, so if you, Mr. Smythe, you mentioned the entryway to Wall High School. I do just want to add that all of the alumni bricks, years ago, there was a fundraiser, certainly before my time, and we had many generous alumni purchase the bricks. And I just wanted to mention that the bricks are being preserved, and they will be repurposed in some site work that's going to be taking place in the future by, in the stadium area. So, I just wanted to mention that. So, we will be taking good care of the alumni bricks as we prepare for some of our other capital projects, and they will be certainly in a high-visibility area for the alumni to enjoy. So, I just wanted to add that.
Great. As I mentioned in my report, we do have several seats that may be open for the board, starting in January of 2024. And I thought it might be nice to get some perspective from our newest member of the board. In this case, it's Ms. Kathleen D. Giovanni. Thought she could share a little bit of her perspective in what it's like to serve on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Stites. I joined the board at a very exciting time with all the work being done in our district pursuant to the referendum. I have really enjoyed being involved in the implementation of the projects already started and those slated for the next two years. The amount of work the previous board, the current board, and of course, the administration have put into these projects is staggering, but highly rewarding. I am amazed, I am amazed at what goes into running this district. It has certainly been eye-opening. The other board members and the administration have been nothing but professional, cordial, and extremely helpful. Any question I ask is answered, and trust me, there have been many. And I will, and there will continue to be many. My biggest takeaway thus far is the extremely high level of dedication displayed by all board members and administration to running the best possible school we can. My motives for throwing the hat in the ring may have been fueled by the gross misinformation disseminated on social media about the Board of Education and administration, and none of which I have found to be based in truth. I say to any Wall resident that really wants to see this district be fabulous and can spare three evenings a month and do some reading and research, should really seek a seat on this board. I assure you, it will be worth it.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we are going to move away from the Board of Education report and move into committee reports. Committee minutes are posted online. Do we have any committee chairs that have anything to add at this time? Ms. Audnet?
I caught a mistake on mine, so I just want to bring it to everyone's attention publicly. It's the curriculum and instruction. I forgot to put the end time for the meeting, because I was scooting to personnel. We ended at 4:00 PM. I apologize.
Thank you. Do we have any other committee chairs that have anything to add for committee reports at this time?
I just wanted to thank everybody for running those meetings while I was away. Apologize, apologize for my absence. I was in Cooperstown, watching a million baseball games.
Okay. Moving on, at this time, I'm going to be opening the floor for public comment on agenda action items. So, again, at this time, public comment is for agenda action items. Please feel free to come to the podium.
Don Herbert, I think it's kind of, it's, three weeks before school starts, and you're moving assistant principals around. I think it's a little late in the year.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda action items? Seeing none, we'll be closing the floor for action, or for public comment on agenda action items. At this time, may I please ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. San Filippo, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. D. Giovanni? Mr. Smythe?
Can you take a roll call, Mr. Radnizia?
Yes.
Mr. Buffer?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Audnet?
Yes, with the exceptions of the following items, which all abstain due to a family member. Number 15, C and D. Number 16, Roman numeral three, letter A. Number three and number four. Number 16, number six, letter A, number 116.
Noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Mall?
Yes, with the following abstentions also. Number 15, C and D. Number 16, Roman numeral three, A. Numbers three and four.
Noted. Mr. San Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondra?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smythe. I also, I'm sorry, I missed it. I had my notes. Also, C and D under 15.
Noted. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate everybody coming out this evening. Hope everyone has a wonderful, weeks and weeks and weeks left of summer. Don't forget that. And we hope everybody's getting excited about the beginning of the school year. We're looking forward to great things. May I please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that, oh, I'll second.
Mr. Radnizia and Mr. San Filippo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thanks, everyone.